All right, it's 5:30.
I'm going to do what I like, please.
Our late call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 15th here in the boardroom. Do we have a roll call, please, Tammy?
Naps Ashbuck.
Here.
Amber DeRosa.
Here.
Jacqueline Gremler.
Here.
Mike Cornisher.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Crew.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Kevin Blake.
Here.
Can you please stand as you're able, face the flag for the Fudge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryland Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Naps respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event, and professional conduct is the expectation for all intenants.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. First thing on our agenda is public comments to the board. Anything that's on our agenda tonight, I did not see any of the pink slips turned in as far as public comment. Does anyone have any sheets that they have not turned in and want to speak? Just as a reminder, we allow up to 15 minutes at each person. If they are with a large group, they're allotted three minutes as a spokesperson to talk about their topic and share their information on that particular section of tonight's agenda. Next, we will go into recognition from the Board of Education. First, we would like to, as a board, recognize the following staff members with their participation in the new Merrill High School course, Exploring Education as a Career. Jennifer Peterson was the coordinator from the Merrill High School. Tiffany Boone was at Washington. Pam Suhaki at Kate. Heather Rick, who's also from Kate. Madison Betcher at Kate. Caitlin Lau at Washington. Stephanie Wilding and Heather Klimick were also from Kate Goodrich. Jolene Honeck from the Middle School. Talina Livin at Washington, along with Lisa Haas. Mary Small at the High School. And Molly Schultz at Kate Goodrich. My understanding is this course was designed to provide students with the comprehensive exploration of the field of education as a potential career path, and those participants gained insights into the aspects of the classroom setting. The course aimed to help individuals make informed decisions about pursuing a career in education by fostering a deep understanding of the profession, its challenges, and its rewards. This brand-new class and initiative Merrill High School piloted this year, had 13 Naps staff who dove into it and were willing to take on a student and show them the ropes of the education field. Jennifer Peterson stepped up and was focused on making the correct matches of students to those educators, grading and doing the evaluation to make sure this program was successful. And we were grateful that they had this opportunity provided for our students and appreciate the willingness of these staff members to help out. So if any of those members that I called up are here, if you could join me to get your certificate and for a photo opportunity, we would appreciate it. Shannon, do you want to add?
There's got to be a more efficient way to do this.
After we get a group photo here, I'll have Vali Libby talk a little bit about how this has worked at the high school and what we've learned in the process.
So we were seeing a need, both right on the hiring side of having a need for people coming ahead of high school that want to pursue a career in education, of getting them hands-on experience and really being able to be immersed in the field. So we often had kids come to us, "I want to be a teacher," but they really didn't have the experience and be able to, like, check it out while they're in high school. And so we saw an opportunity. We also had needs within the schools that were unmet, that they could always use extra help, pull kids for small groups, meet with them individually, even teach some lessons, some of the kids were able to do. So I sent out an email, like, in December and just asked, like, who's interested, and I had so many people, 13, mostly just from Kate and Washington, and one from the Middle School that stepped up and were like, "I don't really know what I'm doing, but sure, I would be happy to do, happy to fill that." The kids love it. The high school kids have said so many wonderful things that they have really got hands-on experience with it. A really cool story that I just want to add, we had a student, Leah Crockford. You might know her. Her mom is an aide at our school, and she came to me, like, in December, like, "I don't know what I want to do with my life. I like working with people, but I really don't want to go to school." And I'm like, "Well, why don't you consider being an aide?" And she's like, "I don't know, that seems like not the best job." I'm like, "Well, we're trying this class, why don't you do this?" So she was matched with Pam Suhaki and worked with students with special needs and loved it, and just interviewed, like, two weeks ago, and she will be an aide at Kate Goodrich next school year. Probably never would have done that otherwise. So a really cool story to share of how we are giving kids experiences, but then they're giving back, and hopefully will be coming back to Merrill. So, anyone else want to say anything?
I just thought it was a great opportunity to get them into the schools and to show off Kate and our staff and our learners, our students. And yeah, it was super cool that Leah really, she was absolutely wonderful in anything that, and she asked so many questions about the students' IPs, and she just really was digging in and wanting to know more. So hopefully, she's an aide and we can maybe get her to go back to school to be a teacher.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, please. So for these teachers to take on a student and make it meaningful is a pretty big task. And so it's not, you just took on a student, I mean, you made it meaningful, which is like prepping for a student-teacher sometimes, and so I appreciate that. We also had some discussions about using this as a way to really kind of grow our own. That's kind of the, one of the goals of it, is to expose kids to education, but with the hopes that they stay in Merrill, come back in Merrill. And so we've had some discussions about some youth apprenticeship, there's a new education youth apprenticeship, we've had some discussion about some bigger things moving forward, so this is the start. These guys are the pioneers of the work.
Shannon, if Ron Liberty wanted to add something real quick.
Good question. Are you going to do this again next?
I hope so, yeah. We're still figuring out exactly. Yep, yep, and we're trying to figure out, because there is kind of like, you've heard of Spills USA, I think Jordan was here last month, right, with Spills USA? So there's support, what is it, Educators Rising? Am I right? Educators Rising, that it's like a hands-on club that you can be in and they can go out and do competitions, too. So we would like to start this Educators Rising at Merrill High School. We're just still figuring out logistics, but some of them are already, like, in my ear. Can I do this again? Can I do this again? Actually, you're the ones that have done it this year, so, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
That's awesome.
Rick? Thank you.
Thanks again. Let's have another round of applause. All right, so next on our recognition for this evening, we'll be recognizing our two student board representatives. Brooke Rudice, her last meeting, I believe, after serving the board as a student board rep here for two years, and also recognizing Max Black for his year of service, continuation on to next year. So we do have... See, that's part of the training market?
Yeah.
Max, you can, your chair, please. Brooke, would you like to share a little bit about your experience? I know you're, you're the soft-spoken one of the two, right?
I actually have something coming with that as well, but...
Okay, and we can wait till then if you prefer.
It doesn't matter. I mean, I just want to say thank you to all of you guys for, like, welcoming me in and making me feel comfortable enough to, like, share the updates of the high school, because otherwise I'd be very intimidating if I was, like, intimidated by all of you guys, but you've been very welcoming, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Look forward to continuing to work with you, Max, and watch you to continue to grow.
I hope so.
Yep, thank you, buddy. All right, thanks again. And before we get into the student board reports, I would like to take a moment to turn that over to Mr. Murray to introduce Parker Wagner, who will be our school board student representative next year coming in, so turn his overview.
So for board members that may not know, the processes that, as Brooke's leading, you find his current software to take that spot. And so the high school will put out a call to staff, get some recruitations, and there's a process to pick a student that represents a school, is involved enough but not super busy that they can make the meetings and those kind of things, and so Parker Wagner is next, is our new incoming student rep. And so Parker, if you could introduce yourself and say a few things, 20 minutes max.
My name is Parker, Parker Wagner. I'm a sophomore, going to be a junior next year. I'm part of the Triumph Music Honor Society, and I'm an officer of Raiser Voice. I'm also on the girls' tennis team and Merrill marching jazz, and I'm looking forward to getting to meet you guys.
We're very happy to have you join us.
Without further ado, we'll turn it over to Brooke and Max to tell us what's been going on in the high school.
I use this microphone to make sure it works for you.
I appreciate it.
So the Merrill Track team, their season is wrapping up as our final competitors head to DC Everest this coming Monday for a regional competition. The team's had a successful season, and there's a great foundation for the next coming few years, so it's looking good. Next week, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, students will be taking their finals. The school has decided to return to a formalized final schedule, which sets aside these three days specifically for these tests. The hope with a more formalized schedule is to set a greater emphasis on the importance of how important these tests are. In the most beneficial way, the stress created is a way to teach students how school may be in the future while doing so in a harmless environment instead of college where the stakes are a little higher. The seniors played their last band concert this Monday. It was a very bittersweet moment for both the students and the teacher. Many awards were given out for the dedication students put into the band program, and two scholarships from the Band Booster Club were awarded to Brooklyn Craganbrink and Carson Schmitz. And the last advanced placement test took place yesterday. The tests are out of a five-point scale, where a three earns credit. If you weren't aware, every time a student passes a test, they earn hundreds of dollars worth of college credit. So AP tests can be a great way to take a huge financial burden off students' shoulders, so we're really appreciative for the teachers who prepared us all year and helped us pass these tests. Well, hopefully pass these tests. They did a great job.
And they won't find out until July. And then this past weekend, we had the chance to attend prom, and it was a huge hit because we served gelato for the first time, which everybody loved, who doesn't want ice cream when you're dancing? And then this year, I got the chance to crown Katie Heckendorf as prom queen and E.J. White as prom king. Yep. And then this topic is a bittersweet one for me to report on, but next week, our seniors will attend the award ceremony on May 22nd, and graduation will be May 24th. The award ceremony will take place at 7:00 PM at the high school as well as the graduation ceremony taking place at 6:00. And then after the part, or after the graduation, there will be a grad party hosted at the high school from 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM with tons of different activities such as human foosball, bingo, a magician, char, or caricature artist, and a hypnotist. And then along with these updates, I have a different kind of update for you guys. I'm kind of nervous for this one, so bear with me. As it was already shared, this is my last official, I'm going to start crying, board meeting, so I want, oh my gosh. So I wanted to close with something special and something I'm truly passionate about. My role, oh my gosh.
You can do it, bro.
Don't look at me!
You can do it, okay, I'll look this way.
Take your breath.
My role as a student representative on the Naps board is to highlight what is going on, oh my gosh, within our school, and I would like to take this time to do it a little bit differently. I wanted to highlight a population, oh my word, of Merrill High School that isn't talked about nearly to the extent and pride they deserve. This semester, I requested to become a teacher assistant for MHS social worker, Tricia Kupchak. Oh my gosh. My reasoning behind it was to take a period to organize the nest, which, if some of you aren't familiar, it is a basic need closet in the high school that students have access to. At first, yes, that was the focus. However, as I spent time in her room, I have started having conversations with students I normally wouldn't see in my higher-level classes. When asked about the students in her room, I have a hard time coming up with a way to describe them. Many might say that they are the kids in the school that don't come to class or the rough kids that come with baggage, but don't we all? While yes, that is true, the kids within her room are so much more than that. They have genuinely, genuinely become some of my closest friends and biggest supporters. I have learned that the true meaning of the corny phrase, "Don't judge a book by its cover." While the students in that room have experienced high school differently from me, it doesn't diminish their status as MHS students. I've been fortunate to have a strong support system unlike many of those students. In high school, I've had the chance to represent my grade and student body, something they haven't had the opportunity to do within their circles. So it's important for me to use my platform to advocate for them. I haven't had this, I wouldn't have this opportunity if it wasn't for Mr. Murray, so thank you for that. I wanted to say thank you to you specifically because you have given me a voice within my community and with that confidence to carry me through my future. I'll never be able to say thank you enough for seeing the value in me when I was too young to see within myself. This one's going to be even worse. While we might appear on opposite ends of the paper, when you engage with each of them, you'll discover, as I did, we're all just sincere individuals doing our best to navigate life. Our district recently introduced, as you all know, the seven mindsets into our curriculum, emphasizing that we are all connected, and through this experience, I felt as though I've never felt this to be more true. I will be graduating next week with a group of students in my circle that I know I will carry with me throughout my future. And for that, Mrs. Kupchak, I would like to say thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Thank you. Sorry, guys, to come into your room with no judgment and only love. I have never felt more at home than I do when I am in your room, and that is a true testament to you and your character. You are changing lives in ways that you will never know, mine especially. This is for you and all the kids that love you. We love you and we thank you. You saved us. And thank you, board members, for giving us this chance to talk about something I believe in and give thanks where it is due. I will always remember my time representing the board in this school, or the school in this board and being welcomed in these meetings with open arms while I was in attendance. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Kevin? Go ahead, Ron.
I have a question. You did a fine job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What are your future plans?
Um, I will be going to, oh my gosh, guys, to UW-Green Bay for social work.
I was just going to say, you should be a social worker.
Yep, and originally it was psychology, but then I spent time in there and then I switched. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say that Brooke's a great teacher, and she's always been very nice to me and accepted me, so thanks for being my friend.
Thank you, yes, thank you, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Murray, for giving me this opportunity to speak, and hopefully I didn't.
I just want to say, I just was at graduation at Green Bay this weekend.
Yeah.
Granddaughter graduated.
Oh, really? Awesome, yes, that's awesome.
She's with the nursing.
Oh, awesome, I know a few kids that are in the nursing program, that's awesome.
Yes, thanks again.
Thank you. Sorry, guys.
That's right, that's very hard, very moving, we do appreciate that. We appreciate all you, Shannon, Brooke, and Max, that's certainly a hard act, you guys were here to work up to that. Wow. Trying to move on.
Yes.
We do have administrator, administrative reports next.
So I get to follow that?
Yeah. That's a reminder, hide of the plate.
You said I could do it, so.
Here we go, this should be...
Pass and put clinic.
Yeah, for real. Thank you, Tammy, for that.
First on the administrative reports is the Director of Strategic Report, including map resource adoption, so we say, in civil school, some of those things are later on in our agenda, but if there are any questions for Man Patterson, she can see you. Again, some of those things are coming up on our agenda. Item B is the Director of Strategic Services Special Ed Report, talking about vacancies for the upcoming school year, scheduling a program in a universal springer, Merrill Mental Health Alliance, Alice Training. I should point out that Amber was just appointed to the Lincoln County OPOA Task Force as the Chair.
Good job, Amber. Were you late coming to the meeting?
No, it was in the first four minutes of the meeting. My first meeting. Valid question.
Item C is the Pine River School for Young Learners, they have monthly data, enrollment numbers, et cetera, and this is where Finnler issues that. Anybody have a question there? The tech department report is provided by Andrew Keller, he's here this evening, if anybody has any questions for him. Followed by the food service report, which is brought by, and participation report is provided by the Food Service Director, Laura Prousey, who's not here, but I can forward stuff on. Dr. Strick's report is next, the Director of Business Services Report, preliminary budget for the next fiscal year, benefits, open enrollment, which started today, I believe. Yes, I got the email, I should have read it. So Kelly's here, if anybody has any questions. And then last is my report, the PFAS update, we meet again with the DNR on the 28th, Jefferson School update, Nick is putting together some numbers about, preliminary numbers about that potential moving Prizl over there, where we need with potential, people that have expressed interest in purchasing that, and then we can bring that back to the board and make some decisions at that time, and this is some information, last week was teacher appreciation, we grabbed that over. So, any questions on that? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Murray. Next on our agenda is committee reports or actions. Did put together the board membership for committee, so the appointments for 24, 25 starting here this next month. Included in that is the description of each committee and when they all meet, including the bylaws 0155, which goes through that whole process. So with that, I do know that shortly we will be working to fill a board vacancy, so at that time, I did talk to a couple of board members to allow a little leeway, when you see this, this current list that we have both digitally and was passed out this evening, that depending on who fills that vacancy, I'll move a couple of things around to make sure that I'm giving everybody an opportunity to serve on the corresponding committees. Anything you'd like to touch base on, anything you've added on the district membership? It looks like it all stayed the same as far as which directors will join you in the committee portion.
Yeah, everything on the main.
Yeah, all right, so everything remains the same. We did talk about at the organizational meeting, we did add the facilities committee on the Wednesday with the curriculum, technology, pupil services meeting, as well as HR finance to follow, so there are three meetings on one evening. There is a recommended motion on this particular topic, if someone is willing to make the motion. Paul?
I move to approve the appointments made by the superintendent for committee assignments, committee membership for the 24, 25 school year.
We have a motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Amber. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic by your members? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on the committee reports portion of our agenda is the facilities committee. Draft minutes were included from the May 8 committee meeting, Ron Liberty as Chair and other members of the facility committee are here for any board member questions. Does any board members have questions based on the May 8 facilities committee meeting? Any questions for facilities committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to finance, human resources committee. The draft minutes were provided for the May 8 meeting. Ron Liberty is Chair and other members of the finance, human resources committee are available for board member questions. Any board members have questions for finance, human resources committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the curriculum, technology, pupil services, or CTP committee. Draft minutes were provided for the May 8 meeting. Paul Crew as Chair and other members of that committee are available for questions from the board. Any board members have questions for our CTP committee this evening?
I was there, but I just heard a little follow-up about outside and eighth graders joining for the DC trip.
I do not have any.
Okay, that's okay.
Reach out and have her back to Everest.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for members of our CTP committee? All right. Hearing none, next on our agenda this evening is unfinished business. We do not have anything categorized as that, so we'll move right down to board of education business. First in that section of our agenda tonight is approval of Head Start state grant supplemental funds of the topic summary sheet provided by Ryan Martinovich and a recommended motion from our Pine River School for Young Learners Policy Governance Board. Anyone willing to make a motion on this item tonight? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 application for state Head Start supplemental funds.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Give any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the federal COLA supplement, the cost of living adjustment, a topic summary sheet provided by Ryan Martinovich and a recommended motion from the Prizl Policy Governance Board. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
Move to approve the 24, 25 Head Start federal COLA supplement.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Do we have any questions or discussion by board members on this motion or topic? Any discussion, questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Washington DC and New York City trip for 2025 attached with a topic summary sheet from Cassie Schultz, Jolene Honeck, and Hazely Benel. There's a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Nubs?
I move to approve the eighth grade Washington DC and New York City trip for June of 2025.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Paul.
With a correction? It's Julian White, not Honeck, you said Julian Honeck.
And I don't want to explain, but that is not correct.
Sorry, I've known her as the other one.
Correct. Will you second the motion?
I thought you were slipping, yes.
All right. We're all good. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? We're all good, any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Alright, Amber. Motion carries with the noted abstention. Next item on our agenda is approval of the Band and Choir Nashville trip for 2025. Topic summary sheet was co-authored by Tricia Dieter and Ellen Wilk. Recommended motion from our CTP Committee, anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Nubs?
I move to approve the Merrill High School Band and Choir trip to Nashville during the spring of 2025.
Motion by Nubs.
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Discussion or questions on this particular motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is approval of the 2024 to 2029 Merrill Adel diploma academy contract. Call Merrill Adel Diploma Academy abbreviated MADA. Topic summary sheet and contract was shared with Principal Tricia Dieter. Our recommended motions from our CTP and Finance Human Resources Committees, anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Paul?
Jacqueline. Jacqueline, handle it.
Go ahead, Jacqueline.
I move to approve the 2024 to 2029 contract.
Motion by Jacqueline, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Shannon, I believe we've had different amounts of time and we've settled on five years here. We've been one year when it started, or three years, two years, and we can do up to the five.
And five is actually a DPA.
Which is what they suggest, and we talked about that at the committee level, so. Alright, any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any additional questions for discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next on our agenda this evening is the approval of the open enrollment applications. Attached was a memo from Amber Luska, and we'll do these as two separate motion and stamp here. So I would look, we have two recommended motions, if we could look at the first one, if someone's willing to make the motion for open enrolled students. Paul?
Move to approve the 260 new students open enrolling to maps and also approve the 556 open enrolled students continuing to maps.
Is that correct number? Is that, I had, I had 260 in one document, I have 308.
The 260 is the correct number, that was it.
260 is correct?
Correct.
So we have a motion by Paul.
I'll second.
And a second by Ron. Any discussion on this topic or any questions by board members? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. There is a second part of this topic for those open enrolling or requesting open enrollment out. Anyone willing to make a motion on that part of the agenda topic? Ron?
Make a motion to approve 47 new students indicating open enrollment out of maps and also approve 192 open enrolled students continuing to be open enrolled out of maps.
We have a motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or question by board members on this motion or this portion of the topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is approval of the Merrill High School Math Resource Adoption from Marrow Hill Reveal. Topic summary sheet was provided by Amber Patterson and presented at both our CTP and Finance HR Committees. And they did make a recommendation for a motion, anyone is willing to make a motion on this topic? Paul?
I move approval of purchase of Marrow Hill Reveal Math for Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II as a universal math resource for the next six school years, in the amount of $86,011.45 to be paid from the SRFs.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Safe and Civil Schools Training. Topic summary sheet was provided, co-authored by Amber Patterson and Amber Luska. And we were informed of this at our CTP and Finance Human Resources Committees. And there is a recommended motion from both of those committees. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Jacqueline?
Recommend the purchase order for Safe and Civil Schools Training for $28,000 and the purchase of training materials of approximately $10,750 and travel expenses to be determined for the training facilitators for the 24, 25 school year.
Motion by Jacqueline, we have a second. Second by Nubs. Do we have any discussion or questions from board members on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the elevator repair at Merrill High School. Couple options were provided from Otis Service and Repair, and they were reviewed at both Facilities and Finance Human Resources Committee. And both of those groups, committees provided a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve option two for Otis Service and Repair for elevator repairs at the Merrill High School.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this topic or that motion on this topic? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is approval of the school parking lot repairs. Information on our topic summary sheet was provided by Nick Bozalek, and it was reviewed at the Facilities and Finance Human Resources Committee level. And they both provided a recommended motion, if anyone's willing to make a motion on this particular agenda item? Paul?
I move approval of the school parking lot repairs now to exceed $20,000.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions from board members on this particular motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the high school roof repair. Topic summary sheet was provided by Nick Bozalek at both our Facilities and Finance Human Resources Committees. Both committees provided a recommended motion, anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
I move to approve the quote quality roofing incorporated in the amount of $114,524 to replace the roof at Merrill High School.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Amber. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic?
Kevin, is this the whole roof or a section roof?
Commons area.
Just the commons area.
Commons area, okay, thank you.
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Ron.
We kicked it around, we couldn't repair it for once at about half year.
Yeah.
But that was only going to last five years, tops, this way we're getting it, a 20-year warranty.
What's that?
It's a 20-year warranty? Yes.
I don't think it's going to be that long. Yeah, if you try to tie those two back together in five years, you're just asking for trouble.
I think the materials were warranty, the materials were warranty for much.
Just as a, for board member purposes, Nick, as an example, how many sections of roofing? When we talk about for budget purposes, do you remember Shannon or Nick?
For just this building?
For just this building, yeah.
I bet two dozen.
I was going to say, it's a lot, so when someone asks the clarifying question, is this the entire roof? You have to figure what the budgeting looks like for that many sections of that roof. Some are smaller, some are a little bit bigger, but this is, as stated, was for the common, above the commons area. Any additional questions or discussion in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is approval of carpeting at Prairie River Middle School. That topic summary sheet and information was provided also by Nick. And that was reviewed at both the Facilities and Finance Human Resources Committees. And they both made a recommended motion, anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Paul?
I move approval of the quote from Central Carpet and Flooring Incorporated for carpeting Prairie River Middle School for $53,938.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Go ahead, Ron.
Did they get a chance to look at it, Nick, or not? Did they get a chance to look at that, to see what's under the carpet, or not?
They've not.
They've not yet?
So for everyone's information, what Ron is looking at there is to make, make sure when that was put in there and if that was, if it was adhesive or something to another substance underneath, what kind of flooring was that? And that will affect where this is, as far as will that bid stay there? So our goal is to stay within the budget of that amount for the motion. That was covered pretty extensive, we had both committees.
Possibly as fast as under there, once we're going to find out first before they go too far.
Any additional discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is approval of concrete repairs across the district. That topic summary sheet and information was provided also by Nick. And that was reviewed by both the Facilities and Finance Human Resources Committees, which provided a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the quote presented by Crawl's Missionary Contractors Incorporated.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Human Resources and Finance Director Positions. This was put on sometime ago for a board member's request and has made it through committees. Specifically, most recently Finance Human Resources Committee to be added to the agenda tonight with their recommended motion. We have a motion on this topic tonight. Jacqueline?
I recommend approval of adding a full-time Human Resources Director.
Motion by Jacqueline, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. This time I'd ask for any questions or discussion on this topic, the motion. Amber, go ahead.
So I have a list here, sorry guys. I did send out some questions ahead of time and got some answers back. But I guess my first question is, we had the Business Services Director coming to take over HR and Finance, and that has just been replaced. So I guess my first question is, why didn't we consider this change prior to hiring that position? Something to kind of look at, do we have to go through all of them or do question or questions?
You can take one at a time. You can kind of, maybe you just go up to the table. So the question is, why, why did we proceed with the Director of Business Services as is before we had this discussion? I think, I think it was kind of the timing of Kelly's resignation to take up another position. And when it came up as an interest point from the Board of Education. And so it was kind of the timing of those two things. We were able to have some discussions a couple of months ago about feasibility and sustainability of that position in the long term. And some of the perils that it's caused us on several fronts, and so that's kind of what got us to this point.
Is it something we should consider waiting until the new director is on board? So we, he can kind of look at his skills and the staff that are there and determine the need?
Well, actually, he called. We've had a discussion, because he saw this as an agenda item, because he's paying attention to agendas. He acquired this, Kelly, and I don't know if you want to have that discussion, Kelly, but to have this as a common position in a district our size is almost unheard of, would you say, or certainly unheard in our area, very rare. And so it's, I don't, I can't imagine that any director of Business Services would be opposed to this once they got into this. Kelly's lived it for two years, she knows how challenging it is, and you can specifically speak to that if you like, Kelly. But I can't speak for the new hire, but I can't imagine they would be opposed.
Yeah, he was not opposed, and the other thing I would say is he's never, although he has 20-plus years as a business manager, is primarily at Finance, has never had director responsibility over HR.
Other than like supervising, other than like supervising the director, it wasn't about that. The challenge is, maybe you jumped around in an upcoming question, finding someone that is, that is skilled in both of those areas, qualified in both of those areas is very challenging. We have a very unique situation, we've created a very unique situation here.
The next one is, well, we talked about the job description was sent, and I don't know if all of you know, based on my experience, I used to be the coordinator. So in looking at this job description, there's six things that I, as a coordinator, didn't do. Otherwise, all of these tasks are stuff the coordinator does. So I guess my question is, how is this role going to differ from what the coordinator is doing?
I think, and Kelly, feel free to chime in, but our coordinator is a little bit different. And we do have some notes in there about changing the job description, I shared that when I shared it out to you. That we will make some updates in that, based on our current realities. The, this position offers us an opportunity to have true direction, is probably the best way to say that. You know, we're, we're an employer, we're an operation that has 380 employees, it's a pretty big deal. And we have 200 limited-term employees, which is the dance coach at the middle school and the theater, you know, all these different positions. So we have a lot of employees, and every one of them needs to be hired and background checked, onboarded. And every one of them needs to be hired and background checked, onboarded. And then we have to, you know, we did the bigger things that a director would do. And so we are learning firsthand, through Dr. Strick's experiences and others, that, that the current model that we have is not sustainable.
If we only had, I think, all three job descriptions would probably be looked at. If you shared all three, because if you've been, Shannon often says, we have to, we would have to hire one first, you know? So I think that's part of that idea, to move forward with the hiring and all of that.
And so Amber, to a fair point, and for Mike's benefit too, so kind of the way this has evolved, as this discussion unfolded. The original plan was to wait, and then if we were to have some turnover there, you know, through attrition, then take advantage of that opportunity. However, we're kind of in a pretty prime hiring season now. And if that, if that attrition would happen in, say, November, the people that are qualified to do human resources directing or serve that capacity with an education background are not available in November, or actually, or August. You know, so it's like, the discussion at HR finance was, let's take advantage of a hiring season. Now, I'll also add, we don't have a candidate yet, you know, because we haven't, so I mean, we'll have to see what the pool looks like, and we're not just going to slot a body in there. We're looking for a director that can do that job.
And that was kind of hits my next one, how is this going to change the director of business services position description? So I guess we can hit that one. Is it something we should consider looking at the whole department as a whole, instead of just going straight to the director? Do we need to look at all of the people under that? And you know, we know there's a few retirements coming up in a couple of years. We know that some new stuff is coming on with like this new online onboarding stuff that tests are going to shift. I'd hate to rush into saying, hey, let's get a director, and then we're like, okay, no, instead of this, we need this, and instead of that, like, I guess I'd personally rather look. Do we need to hold off, take a little bit of time, look at the whole department and say, yes, maybe we need a director, but we don't need X, Y, and Z, instead we need A, B, C?
Yeah, so we've already thought those through. So we had our current model with, with the positions and then, and the titles in it, and then the new model with this, potentially with a director. And so we have all those positions mapped out, what's on the finance side, the two positions on the HR side, with one shared payroll between the two. And so we have thought those things out. And so the tricky part, if it's tricky, will be as people leave through attrition, to start reassigning. So that'll be fitting the people we have into those models. Now, we have people with those skills, and they, you know, they work together and whatever. So for someone to, for us to massage that in the business services office, for example, would not be super challenging. So we have the model, and our model, by the way, is very common for school districts our size, and Martha Powell, our new director of business services, is supportive of that model as well. So the model's there, we just have to, as attrition happens and as people come in, though, fit them into that model.
I wasn't here when it was decided to make all of those into the one position, and I mean, technology was on there originally too, and that's been taken off. So we added the coordinators under it with a failed referendum, and this white salary being fairly significant. My concern is bringing in now two directors and two coordinators, so we have gone from two physicians to now four physicians doing what two physicians were doing. So I guess what has changed from when we went from three to one, so we kind of took technology off, and now we want to go back to two, but we still have these coordinators. Like there's, there was reasoning why we changed all that. I guess, do we need to look more into all of that in order, has that already been, and how do we justify that, I guess?
So I want to shed something before I have you go through that. You know, when you look back in time, even right before Kelly came on board, that was an operations referendum versus a capital improvements. So yes, they had both failed, but a number of things in the last biennium state budget worked in our advantage. So when we talked as, as not only a committee but as a board, when Governor Evers and, and the state process changed what our amount was coming in. We refocused on the capital improvements and on the facility studies and everything that was done. So that was how we got to that point, to make sure our budget would be balanced. How are we adding additional monies to fund forty-six if we would need that for building maintenance and capital improvements versus operations? And not to make light of our discussions on rightsizing as well as two million dollars worth of cleanup in the budget and reduction. To find out that that was going to be balanced in a slight surplus based on what was done at the state level. So I don't want to, the most recent referendum was, was not operational, so that there was no jobs in jeopardy, there was, and we were also coming off of spending S R dollars. So there was a lot of moving parts that when we talk about this in the community, that people use some of those things interchangeably, the different types of referendums and what we've done for work in the boardroom and in the district collaboratively. So I'll let you go into the question more, but that was kind of a baseline that I think we need to kind of go back the last number of years to set that stage, but I'll let you go through it.
And so I wasn't part of the discussion or decisions to get to that model, and there's, you know, other people may speak to that. But what we've learned in the last couple of years, including prior to Kelly getting here, I'll add, is that model hasn't worked for us, and that's kind of on the table. So it feels, we feel like this is a rush, but this discussion's been taking place in some shape or form, even at the board level for several months, a couple of months. And it was on HR finance last month, I think, eight months ago. So it's been on, on the radar. I shared the job descriptions, I shared the salary description, because essentially what we're doing is we're just bringing that back. And that's a big thing, and it certainly is a financial thing, and I respect that. But it's not that we're starting like a new thing with a new position, or how did that go? As far as like the tech director is concerned, yes, we've made those modifications and, and, you know, we've adapted to that. Moving forward, if, if this is the model that the board decides to go with, we will reevaluate those positions, those three business services positions, as attrition affords us that opportunity, or as those opportunities come forward, and make those tweaks along the way. And so we might have a position called a coordinator now, that's not to say we maybe necessarily have that in four years or five years, which will be how that goes. So as those things come on, we will reevaluate.
And you've got with staff collectively, and this is about using everyone's strengths and tying that together, making the workload as feasible as possible. To not have additional, you know, potential for burnout as well. It's a lot of work to do, and you talked about the full-time staff as well as everyone else that's involved in running the districts.
One of the things that's happened, I don't know, probably in the last four years for sure, is that certified professionals' staff licensing has gotten very great. And so we are bringing in people with license with stipulations, emergency license, all these things that need to be monitored and adjusted and, I guess, qualified for in advance. And so that whole licensing side, which is a struggle for us tenor currently, well, because it's so prevalent today, really needs to be monitored and directed, because it's not, then we get into aid situations, and so what perils there?
So I did all that in that role, that's why some of this, like you're talking about, that was the expectation when I was in that role. So that's where I'm kind of questioning some of this, it's like, I, I get it, I think we need to really look at stuff, and it is a ton, Kelly, I totally agree with that. But I just want to make sure that we are using the money in a, in the appropriate way. Because by adding those two coordinators and bringing this back, you could hire one or two more teachers, you could hire, buy more aides with those type of pay, you know, just amount-wise, that I would want to make sure we're using it in the best way. Versus if it should be put towards student type stuff instead, like student contacts.
The only thing I was going to add to your point is the labor shortage, just in general, not just licensing, but I think there could be room for more recruitment and different staff recruitment and the need for that. And that I think all of us have felt that a little bit. The other thing, I totally understand where you're coming from, but I think it's a six-person model to a different six-person model. It's the seventh person right now, right, like until there is an attrition. So, and the one thing is benefits, regardless of position, the benefits are kind of, that's a number that's whether it's a support staff or a director, those can stay somewhat constant, if that makes sense. The difference would be like from a coordinator to a director, that's the additional for a six-person.
But you'll still potentially have that coordinator, so from a coordinator to a secretary is significant too, or director to a secretary technically. So, I mean, that, we're talking about attrition, but it could be by six years. We don't know if it's going, you know how long that could be? So, I mean, that could be a significant amount when it comes to roles later.
So it could be, I would say our history would suggest that it's not going to be.
I think that's all, yeah.
Thank you, Amber, additional, Ron?
This was my idea, not idea, I shouldn't say, this was my bringing forward to the board, because I've been on both sides, and I was here when he had two positions, and I was here now since they had one. Dr. Strick, I've been working with her from last year, I was a treasurer last year, and pretty much every month I'd go in there, and she's eighteen hours a day, seven days a week. You can't stay on top of everything, on a deal with that many people, that just, you know. Board members that left here felt the same way, that didn't run this year, felt the same way. He came here to cut positions, and he said we made a mistake. So I, I just believe we got to get workman's comp claims, somebody that's just worked on that. I'm not saying anybody in those offices are going to be bad or whatever, it's just too much, it's just too much. That's my feeling.
And I guess, again, I, I was in the role, so I have a little different perspective, and I thought at that time those things were kept on pretty good. So I don't know, there's new staff in there too, so maybe it is changing up the roles, and like you talked about some of the position descriptions and, yes, you have to change.
I don't know anybody down there, back there, back in the role, I'm looking at it from the job being just too much for one person.
But is it something then that we need to, like I said, reevaluate the whole department first?
That's what you said, that's, that was my understanding when I brought it up, that we were going to look at the whole, and see what's, what needs to be changed, what doesn't need to be changed.
Okay, so then do we need to hold off, is what I'm asking, and look at it all versus just bringing in the director?
I think you already did, I think we already did.
Amber, I think to your point, maybe the key word is first, do we need to do this first? And so it's kind of like, we are, we know what the model is that we want, because we know it works. We know what our staff is, and so it's like, do we wait for our staff to align to get to the model, or do we create the model and then fit our staff in a little while? And so we decided that the model is the right one, and as time goes, bringing in a director, but as time goes, massage the rest of this, massage the long-term, what we like.
Yeah, and this is the hiring season for finance directors, HR, we've been waiting a year probably before we do this again, and I think we just, we got to do it. And I've seen it both ways, and it's just too much for one person.
Thank you, additional?
Just to, just to echo Ron's, Ron's statement. We've experienced what it does to one person, we lost a person in front of, in front of Dr. Strick, that got tired of working all the hours. If you go back a number of years, we had those two positions. And why we have reworked, I don't know, it's a different atmosphere. But we can't keep waiting and dragging our feet. As we do these, do this, we're letting people go away, good people go away. And you talk about teachers, wanting more teachers, yes, that's a great idea. However, if they're not people here to take care of the role of the need for teachers, then put back toward the work. And if we just, we haven't functioned very well that way. Shannon and Dr. Strick have done a great job bringing us up to where we belong. So I, I don't see any sense to hold back and hold off or whatever. We've been long enough to go ahead and do it.
Thanks, Paul. Jaclyn?
I just appreciate your questions, right? And somebody who, you know, you have the experience and worked in the job, and I think that they're very thoughtful. And, you know, I've been a part of these conversations, and so some of the things that you are asking, I had conversations about, so that's why I was in support. But just a comment, I, I just always, maybe just the psychology of the discussion is always interesting to me, that we're, we're really discussing the salary in the position of an administrator. And I feel like that's always sort of like a hot topic in our community too, even when we're talking about running the school district or asking for dollars for referendum. Public comments is always cut administrators. And it's a really, so it's just interesting, and I, and I kind of just think about even now, we're, we want to be thoughtful and good stakeholders of community dollars, stewards of that dollars. And so we look at the salary and think, oh my goodness, but we just approved the same amount in carpeting and elevator repairs. And so I, I'm always just sort of mind-blown about the psychology of that, that like, we will think not hold off, because those things need to be done, to continue operating at facilities. But I feel like the same level of respect should also go into, this is needing, like our, this office is degrading. And with that, there's things that are falling through the cracks, and, you know, like the majority of this district is service provision. So anyways, I don't know, I just, I think about, I just think it's a really interesting discussion and raises really good points, because I think the things that you talk about are also things that our community members are going to be thinking about. How are we adding an administrator position right now, when all the things, right? And so a lot of those discussions are centered around like misconceptions of different types of referendum, and how we're using the monies and all the things. So I think it raises an interesting point too, what, how do we communicate that we've made good decisions and thought through all of those things to, you know, our community partners? I'm just talking out loud, I don't really have anything to be answered, so.
One more, Kelly?
Go ahead, Ron.
I've been talking to Kelly and Shannon about this for a year, so it's something that they've thought of for a long, and I've thought of for a long time, that just look at it. So it's new here, because it just came out, but been talking about it and working on it for the last year.
I had that conversation with them when I left, that we needed to reevaluate it. I just want to make sure that it's been looked at as a whole versus just like, let's add this quick fix and hold it fixed.
I agree with you, I agree with you, but don't push me on the dinner, right?
Yep.
That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all for your discussion and clarifying questions. Next on our agenda is the Friends of the Ebby School Forest donation, that we had attached donation form and topic summary information from Nick. Just a reminder, due to the fact that donation is over twenty-five hundred dollars, which is set in policy seventy-two thirty, this donation comes to the board separately from consent agenda for approval. This has been reviewed by facilities committee, and there is a recommended motion. Is anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Paul?
I move approval of the donation of funds from Friends of the Ebby School Forest, valued at three thousand, three hundred dollars, for the Merrill School Forest landscaping by the pond sheltered newly.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
Oh, sir.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you to the Friends, and we will continue with the next item and thank them again. The next item is Friends of the School Forest donation of a brush mower for the Merrill School Forest. That donation form, topic summary sheet and information was provided by our school forest instructor, Russ Nolan. Same policy seventy-two thirty applies, because the donation is for more than twenty-five hundred dollars, which is stated set there. Anyone willing to make a motion on this particular topic? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the donation of professional series brush mower for Friends of the Merrill School Forest, valued at $6,850 for the Merrill School Forest.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks again to the Friends of the Elspie Evue School Forest. They do a great job supporting items out there and volunteers, they certainly are there all the time. They were there for the recent tree planting and dedication of the educational center by the, by the Pond Shelter. A lot of, a lot of things that we've covered in this last school year that they've been helping with. So thanks, such a thanks to them as well. Next item on our agenda is the Aspire's Merrill Hospital donation for the Attendance Matters program. Attached was a donation form and topic summary sheet provided from Tricia Kubicek. Same Policy 7230 is applicable here with the limit of $2,500. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Is anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Nubs?
I move to approve the donation of funds from Aspire's Merrill Hospital, valued at $6,000 for the Merrill High School Tenants Matters Program.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Amber. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Personnel Report, Hiring, Recruitments, Resignations, Retirements, et cetera. And that was put together by Dr. Strick and her team. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
I move approve the attached Personnel Report contingent bond release of contract for hirings and a bond of satisfaction of the appropriate limited damages for resignations if applicable.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda will be the Consent Agenda. Before we get to that motion, I'll ask if anyone would like anything pulled from the Consent Agenda. When I say that, any individual item a board member would like pulled out to be discussed individually, is what I would be asking for. Otherwise, seeing no hands up, I would ask if someone is willing to make a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda. Ron?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C, which includes minutes in the April 17th, 2024, April 22nd, 2024 meetings, claim vouchers, receipts totaling $2,884,942.53, and donations totaling $3,983.72.
If a motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Paul. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions?
I just want to abstain from the April 17th, 22nd minutes.
All right, thank you, Amber. Ron?
I abstain from the April 17th and April 22nd minutes.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is items for future meetings. This is an opportunity if board members want to highlight anything, they want it to be brought either to the board as a whole or to future committee meetings. Just for clarification that they want to hear them or more information. It allows for some planning, Mr. Murray and his, the district, as well as committee members. Any board members have any items that they were looking to add this evening? And you already highlighted the one where you're working with Ryan and Nick to get some information as to what that would look like at Jefferson as far as cost and feasibility within the budget to move Prizzle in that direction. And I believe in other core business, you had highlighted in your report also the VFOs situation that we're meeting with the DNR going forward. I believe we'll, one of the things that we worked on in the last calendar year was informing the community as well, working in general, how the board works. We've tried to highlight different committees and different roles of the individual board members, because they see us just here on regular board nights. So I believe us board members have some more ideas on that. We'll be considering that one checked off, we've worked on that for a year. There are some more ideas. Ron, give your hand up.
I mentioned to the superintendent about having, when we were doing the referendum, having a coffee with the superintendent during this room. He thought it was a pretty good idea, maybe start in the fall, maybe start out at once a month, see who shows up. Anybody interested in, you know, free coffee? If it doesn't work, we're gone.
Ron, if you want to have coffee with me, just ask. I've always, he's too cheap. I gotta buy it? Yeah, you gotta buy it. Yes, we have talked about that, we know.
Wow, here we go. Yeah, there you go. With that little banter between the two of them, let's see if there's any other items for future meetings.
Could we maybe just expand on that? Like, we're talking about a community engagement and different things. I know there are some things in town, like the Chamber puts out stuff that's going on each week. I know Social Services is trying to get stuff for youth, and then there is Justice Committee. Can we maybe look at groups, organizations in our town that we can relay information about the school?
Yeah, certainly. You know, we've talked about different communication avenues and tools, even outside of the referendum. You know, we've had a discussion, are exploring the potential of, say, once a semester, just a newsletter, like go different places, how to engage in the Chamber to you, Amber. And so we're starting to look at some of those things, figure out.
Could be a good review item for everybody, just to show what we've tried, what you're continuing to embrace and what new ideas you've had. Certainly the community advisory on the education, some education pieces coming up. It's another way for engaging the community and seeing what's going on besides a night or two at the Fab Lab, which has been very popular and maybe even happening more often than a couple of times. So, stay tuned, I think there's a lot of exciting things there. We need to showcase those things and how, to your point, to get those out to the community besides just Facebook and newsletter and the website. We can certainly brainstorm some more things there. Additional items for future meetings? Anyone, I didn't see any other hands up, but if we have some, they brought us some new ones. Continue to work together on those. Just remember, if there's something that comes to mind and you know that it either fits at this meeting or at a specific committee meeting, feel free to reach out to Shannon or myself or that committee chair, and we will make sure that we address those items on the appropriate agenda. Just a reminder, tomorrow morning, Shannon and I will be on Blue Jay Radio talking about tonight's board meeting and events that have been happening in the district. And we'll be showcasing some of the things Brooke and I have talked about. Other future meetings will be the School Forest Advisory Meeting on Monday, May 20th at 4:00 p.m. out at the School Forest. We do have a special board meeting on Wednesday, May 22nd, 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. That's working on the board vacancy situation and interviews of people that have booked their names in for that vacancy. Bridges Virtual Academy's Governance Board next meets on Thursday, June 6th, 12:45. They meet virtually. Curriculum Technology Group Services Committee meets on Wednesday, June 12th, 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Our Finance Human Resources Committee meets immediately after that on June 12th, no sooner than 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Our next regularly scheduled meeting for the month of June will be Wednesday, June 19th, 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. This time, we do not have a closed session this evening, and that concludes our agenda, so I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Got a question first?
Go ahead, Nubs.
How many candidates do we have so far for application?
Seventeen, is the last number.
And if you feel your arm or leg being folded, probably is.
Yes.
So that's why we don't have Ron answer many questions. No, I believe I just ended today at 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. It was, do we have more than one? We have one person to go through the process of interviewing and seeing if they will be a fit.
I'll adjourn.
Motion by Nubs to adjourn, do we have a second? All right, we have a second by White to adjourn at 6:52 p.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And we might give Ron the opportunity to abstain. Motion is adjourned.